Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting on July 20, 2015. If you'd stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. I can call my other clerk, Laura Roll.
Okay. Councilmember Althoff?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Councilmember Hodges?
Here. Thank you. Is there a motion to excuse the absences?
I will move for an excuse of the absences.
I'll second.
I move in second to excuse the absences of Councilmember Ellison as well as Councilmember Mayor. All is in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any post. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the agenda.
I will move for approval of the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, we did have a request to add a couple of items. One was streets and one was police department. Requesting for councilman Althoff.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Roll call.
Yes, um...
You want to add those two items?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we would add that. That is new business. So, item C would be streets. Item D would be a police budget or police concerns. I have myself here. I need a motion and in a second add those to the agenda.
Um...
Making a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to add two items to the agenda under new business, the streets and the police. As item C and D, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, any opposed. The overall agenda then? Is there a motion to approve that as amended?
Oh, I think motion to approve it as amended.
I will second.
And move in second to adopt the budget or the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, any opposed. Approval of the minutes of our previous meetings, and there is a corrective sheet that was handed to us. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes of our July 16?
I will move for approval of the minutes as presented.
I will second.
And move in second to approve the amended minutes of July 6. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, any opposed. Thank you. Approval of the accounts payable. Those are in our packet for review, and I don't think there are any corrections proposed at this time. And any questions or concerns regarding the accounts payable?
I will move for approval of the accounts payable as presented.
I'll second.
And move in second to adopt the accounts payable as presented to us in the packet for this week with a task for roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Althoff?
Here, for yes.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you. Item five is citizen comments for any items that do not appear on the agenda. So, if you'd like to address the council, this would be the time to do that. And seeing none, I'll move on to old business. Item six, strategic goals as well as pending council projects report. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just a few things to highlight in the strategic goals report. Just to remind you, this is the new report for the new fiscal year. Under Tier One banners downtown, we do have that checked out and being completed. The banners have been installed downtown. The banner program is up and running. We'll continue to work with the Downtown Development Authority to, you know, further flush that program out, but we have that up and running. Another thing that I want to just point out is that in the report, there are a number of items that talk about discussion at a future workshop. I think getting into August, September, October, November, we'll be fairly busy with our workshop discussions because I need to flesh out and get a better understanding from you what your specific and measurable goals are for some of these items. In particular, under Tier One Economic Development Stayout, just wanting to get a better idea of what you feel would be a success in that area. Under Tier Two, Promoting Empowerishments, that's actually number one at the bottom of the page. Under the ordinance review, I've mentioned trash that we have a draft with some associated rules ready to go. We just need to actually dust that off and bring it back to you for further discussion. And I think we can get more in on amending the trash section of current ordinances. Proactive code enforcement, that's an item that you've had as a strategic goal for this. It's the second year now. You asked us to be more proactive in terms of code enforcement, and I just want to have a discussion with you about what that means and talk with that a little bit more. And then reviewing the investment strategy, number one, under Tier Three, we need to have a better idea of what you feel is a measurable outcome for that call. So, those are some that we need, just sort of a highlight of what may be coming up on future workshop agendas that we need to have more discussion on those items. But other than that, under pending council projects report, there's no further update on any of those items. I did remove line disposal, as we talked about last meeting. And be happy to answer any questions over those two reports that you have for me.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hall?
Yeah, wastewater inflow and infiltration. Probably coming on that.
The data has been collected. They are getting from us now water usage data at a, I think at a parcel level, at a per-residence level, and they're going to compare that to the data that they have. They're also going to be going to put it into our GIS system so it's mapable. And there, that was the last report I got from them, I think a week ago. And so, they're moving forward on doing that data analysis. The data's been collected now. They're doing the analysis.
Okay. And then, I know it's not still on here, but it is still on here. We haven't really ever finished the sidewalk program. And there's a lot of red flag sidewalks. And it is an ordinance.
Yeah.
And on-street parking. Do we allow on-street parking on the city streets?
If somebody has a need and they come in for a parking permit, are they usually granted on a temporary basis?
What does our ordinance say?
Our ordinance says we do not park in city streets from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.
Okay. Um, okay, that's all I wanted to know about that. So, I think that there are more important things to be working on, on the ordinance thing at our workshops or whatever. We keep making new rules and changing them. And I know probably everybody's seen my sign, but the reason I did that and I'll make that statement right now so everyone knows is I don't think the ordinances are enforced equally in this town. I, and I never have. So, I think we should be working on more about enforcing what we have or taking them off the books than worrying about enforcing them. So, the other thing that I'd like to talk about is the rehabilitation, round rehabilitation. Have we had anybody sign up for that yet?
No. We were eligible to start that program on July 1, and we've not moved forward on it.
Okay. Just one.
All right. All right.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Item seven, new business. Item A is a resolution contract with Hope Network West Michigan for specialized transportation services.
This was a program that we were running through the CDVG Community 12 block grant with Kent County. We were part of the urban county program. And we made the decision, a little over a year ago, I believe, it was May of last year, to pull out of the urban county program. That is actually what made us eligible for the round rehab program that we were just talking about. But in doing so, that meant that we lost the funding for the North Kent Transit Transportation Program that we had been a part of for many years. The council had directed me to include in the budget continuing that program at least for another year, that we didn't want to just plug on the program. In the meantime, I've had an initial discussion with them and planned on working with them to see if that's something that they view willing to pick up and we could work together to find future funding for that and not necessarily fund it through the general fund. But in the meantime, for a year, we had it included in the budget. It typically is about $3,000 to $4,000. And in order to keep the program running, we would have to contract directly with Hope Network. In prior years, those contracts were actually through the county, not necessarily directly with the city. So, what this does is it authorizes the contract with Hope Network to the program running for another year.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or concerns, or is there a motion?
I wonder if we accept this resolution 10-15.
I'll second.
And move in second to support the resolution 10-15 as presented as a resolution. We need a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you. Item B is a resolution, a license agreement with Monde L. Kristof Trust of Public Pedestrian Pathway.
We have a 10-year agreement that has actually expired with Monde Kristof who owns the property that White House sits on. You may all be aware of the public pathway that we have that runs across the edge of that property from Creekside Park and connecting it to Foreman Road. As I said, that agreement's expired. We've negotiated a new agreement. The only real changes are that there's a retention pond there. We agreed to install some signs along the pathway just to make sure that people know that they should be monitoring the pathway and the retention pond. And also that the parking that's on that property is for White House. It's not public parking. Typically, what people will do is park in the schools and then walk through the path. So, and then the other provision is that there is a termination clause that allows you, the party, to terminate without cause by giving a six-month notice. So, those are the two changes.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, concerns, or a motion?
I will definitely approve resolution 11-15 as presented.
I'll second.
And move in second to adopt resolution 11-15 as presented. And again, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor is absent, and Mayor Hodges?
Yes. Thank you. Item C involves streets, and this is the item that Councilmember Althoff pushed to bring before the council. So, Councilmember Althoff, what you got?
Well, I've had quite a few residents from the city of law ask me what we're going to do with the streets. And as we all know, it got voted down in the state not to support that. And I think it got voted down in the city of law to not support that. I'm not sure. But I think that there's enough interest in some of the people in the city of law that I think maybe we should look into maybe putting something on the ballot to come up with some ways of to finance the streets and let the citizens make this choice. Because we, I know we're spending $300,000 this year in the streets. We've got some grant money for Donna Street, but it's going to take a lot more than that. And I think that most of the problem with the city, and I'm going to state it right now, people aren't going to like it, but if you look back, as we built this nice police force we have, we quit fixing the streets in the city of law. And we had all that, we had the money to put away, but we didn't. We just kept spending it. And I think that it's time that the citizens of law give their say. So, I think we should find out if it's too late to put it on the ballot this year, and if it isn't, we should get a committee together right away and hash it out. There's a lot of people that would like to be on that committee, so...
Do you have something specific to...
Well, we either, we're either going to have to, well, there's only one way you can do it, is you got to reason that. And everybody hates that. I hate it too, but...
Well, you can do a special assessment.
I don't want to do a special assessment because that ends up being the people that live on that street. I think that the whole town should bear the whole burden. We fixed Donna Street, then people didn't pay a dime. What we're going to do around the city hall, we're not paying a dime. I think every, there's none of this special assessment thing. I don't think it's right. Never has been. If that people live on that street, come in and wanted the street fixed, we would do it that way. But I think every street in this town is driven on by everyone, and it's not fair to, the people on G Drive don't have to pay for G Drive. The people on Foreman don't have to pay for Foreman. I think that the only way we could do this is with a village, and we got to come up with some ideas. But we've been, we've been waiting and hearing. Mark's had a strategic plan on it for a lot of years, but I think it's time that we just get it done. And then special assessments aren't my wage. I'm sorry, but...
Well, I'm just going back to the fact that all the streets downtown were done on special assessment back in the 70s. So, people in Valavista paid nothing. People in the Hill District paid nothing. So, the streets that we're looking at changing now or improvement, it would be the second time they've paid a special assessment, so...
Well, I don't agree with you on that.
Well, I don't agree with you on things either.
I think it should be a pool of, the pool of the money should pay for it because that's the only way it's fair, I think, so...
All right. Would you be interested in getting up such a...
Yes, I would.
So, Mr. Hall, what would you want on doing that?
However you would like. Where we're at on streets right now is that you asked me to put together a list of the streets that we would recommend doing over the next five years for your August workshop. And so, we're in the process of doing that. I've actually been riding my bike around town because you can really see the streets better from your bike than you can from your vehicle, although you can avoid the pathways. But I'm finding some of them you can't avoid even on a bike. I've also been talking with Rod Wood, our interim public works director. Rod brings with him a wealth of knowledge on street repairs and what's worked with his previous employer and what hasn't worked. He also recently sent to me from the engineer over there some of their estimated costs per mile per fix, which means, you know, what is it costing them to crack seal? What is it costing them for mail and fill? One of the things that we're talking about for some streets is crushing shape, which is not a discussion that we've ever had here in terms of something that could be an alternative for us to be able to get a street done and get the best bang for our buck. And that's really what we're trying to do. If you think about it, and if my math is right, if a street lasts, let's say, 30 years, typically you would be doing, you don't want to do them all at once because I think that's what happened before, is we did them all at once. Now, we didn't do any. But you would do 3% to 4% of your streets every year and put them in a position of being able to last 30 years and get 30 years out of them. So, I think I had that math right, don't I? I just want to correct that. And I'm pretty confident that what we're going to present to you in August is going to be hitting that 3% to 4% target. You know, we'll know as we get it defined. We'll have that discussion at the August workshop. But you still have to pay for them. And we still have to find a way to find the funds for it. We've looked at various alternatives. And, you know, if you wanted to put something on the ballot in terms of the knowledge, if you wanted to have the special assessment out, that's certainly a direction that we would take from you and apply that to the plan. I don't know, you know, what the, you talked about setting up a committee. And I think before you do that, if you want the committee to be successful, you have to talk about what specifically you want the outcomes of that committee to be, what specifically you want them to bring back to you. And make sure that they're, you know, the makeup of the committee is clearly defined, the outcomes in the committee are clearly defined before you actually create it. But to answer your question, I know this is a long answer to it, but to get to the point, I think that would come from the council. I think that's something that you would set up. And again, like I said, be clear about what you want from them, and then be clear about who's going to serve on it.
All right. Now, the other part is how soon does something need to be put together to have on the ballot?
I'm not sure. We won't answer it tonight, but we can, we can look into it and send out the email this week and just let you know what the, what that date is. So, you at least know that. Typically, it's September. Something isn't it? I don't know if I've got any options. But then you've got a whole publication process and everything leading up to that too. So, we may be pushing the envelope and trying to get something on the ballot. But we'll find that date out and get that to you.
And your charge, of course, is that we need to know what we're, what the outcome, what we're looking for.
I think you should be very specific because if you're not specific, then, you know, things can get off on tangents and discussions can get off on tangents. So, you want to be real clear. And I'm not saying having citizen task force or committees are a bad idea. I think they're actually a very good idea. You have that with your boards and commissions. You happen to not have one that's focused on the streets. And maybe it's the Biden Commission. Maybe you use one that you already have in place, or you set up a special one. But be very clear about what your expectations are. And then the other thing is be clear about who you would want to serve on it. And, you know, that can become, you know, a topic of discussion for council meetings. When you have five council members, sometimes you want five different people serving on it. And sometimes that's a way to be able to, you know, determine who sits on it. Every council member picks a person.
So, in the meantime, Councilmember Althoff, could you maybe for our August workshop put together a list of outcomes, desired proposals, and things that might be considered for our discussion matter?
Yes, I will.
All right. Moving on then to item D, police. And what do you got there?
Okay. Well, a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Hall said that I never brought up even talking about cutting the police department budget. And I have a couple of different times. And so, basically, I'd like to have that on the next workshop, looking at their budget and how everything is spent, how we are...
All right.
Okay.
Can I do that for Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Okay. You'd love me to. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on then to month of reports. Item A, if that's in the packet there, look over. Any questions or concerns with our various departments and what we have?
I got one for Mark.
Mr. Mark. Yes.
Or, Mr. Mark Monster, on the, on the graph, the pink is the actual flow, correct?
Oh, that Mark.
Yeah. I knew that I shouldn't have bothered to ask you because you'd have to answer it anyways, but...
Yes. The straight line going across is the design average of the...
And the, and the pink is the...
The daily flow from one day to the next, and now varies going up and down.
And the spikes are the rain days?
Usually.
Yeah.
Yep.
What, what does it cost this basically extra for the spikes?
For extra water?
The extra water.
And it usually is just water. So, there's no specific way to quantify it to exact dollars and cents, but what you have are pumps that run at higher capacities. The rotors and the ditches are submerged, more drawing, more current. So, it's that kind of, primarily it's power. Because it is just water. It's not, if we haven't had a rain in a very long time, a heavy rain will flush the system. So, there will be some more organic matter that comes in that's going to settle in the camps. But generally speaking, it's just water. So, it's just the cost of moving water.
What it does cost?
There is, there is a cost, yeah. As opposed to a community that never has any rain like Arizona.
Yeah. Okay. That's all.
Thanks for asking me something, man. I sit here...
I can't ask you if it doesn't rain.
I can't figure something out in the report, and maybe Mark can just verify this. But there's a, there's a chart in there that talks about plant influence. And it has a couple of columns under weather heading, a couple of columns under flow heading. And the weather heading gives us the precipitation on a given day. Is that correct?
Yep.
And the flow gives us the actual flow. So, you can, you can look through those numbers and have an idea of about a lot of rain and kind of compare that to the...
Yep. We started one. I picked one in appendix A. It's called, the heading at the top is plant influence. And this first column is what kind of data we have, I believe. And the second column is how many inches of rain there was for that day, if any.
Yeah.
And then you can correlate that with the graph in the back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Anything else concerning reports? Moving on, there's item nine, council comments. Mr. Mayor's absent. Mr. Althoff?
Well, we did have an airport work meeting, and we, the board discussed what we had to work B, and the guys moved the windsock and some of the other stuff to get us closer to becoming general utility. And actually, the board did that in-house and did basically all the work themselves. I think the city did, let us use tobacco. I was out of town and so I wrote it all. But we did have a parks meeting last week. And we added it Creekside, no, yeah, Creekside. And they, they had the Impact Church there. I don't know if I'm getting into anything that you did.
Jump right on, it was a great thing that you did.
Impact Church, and I don't know what all they did, but they were at Creekside Park. They did a fabulous job of cleaning up, trimming trees, putting bark out. I want to thank them all a lot. I don't know where else they worked, but I think Ron does.
Creekside, we're in Creekside.
Yeah. So, I'd like to thank them people that really appreciated all the work that they did. And it was all volunteer. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I attended the layer meeting. The engineering has been completed for the new trail extension that's on Alden Nash. And this, the new extension would be from G Drive to... And this, the new extension would be from G Drive to Main Street. And so anyway, the, that project has officially been kind of accepted as a project ongoing. I just wanted to say that with the Riverwalk Festival, our DPW group was asked to clean up around the transformer. And they did such a nice job, I don't think anybody knows that they even did anything. Let's walk back, good, so. I appreciate the DPW and Ron's participation in that. That's it.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Allison is absent. Low light and power, for me, Light Low Light Power did meet last week. Notes from that meeting there that the Michigan Municipal Energy Association Conference will be held at the Crown Plaza, as it has been for the last couple of years, on Twenty-Eighth Street. The dates are October seven, eight, nine. With breakout sessions specifically here to the board members. So many of the board members of Light and Power will be attending that particular conference. Last week Valerie Brader, the head of the Michigan Energy Agency, was here in Lowell and had lunch and gave a speech to Lowell Rotary and Chamber of Commerce, as well as a tour of the biodigester. And that tour was most interesting. They're looking at having a public opening, perhaps sometime September, October. Speaking of biodigester though, it continues to struggle getting over the hump of fifty percent capacity. Minor modifications are still being made so that the microbes can do their thing and work better. The weather kinda works against them, or has been. So they're still part of the fun, working out the bugs. Work continues on the installation of the Rolls Royce turbine. And they'll start to have more progress in the coming months as the biodigester efforts are backed off. Hopefully, we can be doing that as it gets online and working much, much better. Also, they're looking into perhaps purchasing St. Mary's School as a new location. This is completely investigative at this point, no public announcement as such. But they are investigating what uses that they might have with St. Mary's School should they relocate and have all of their facility, all have one location. So that would be very good if that pans out, but they're looking at that. And then two weeks ago, Mark Howe and myself met with Greg Pierce and Greg Camfield concerning the pilot program. Now pilot means payment in lieu of taxes. It's a cooperation between Lowell Light and Power, as well as the city, in receiving some funds in payment in lieu of taxes that Light and Power would normally pay to a community. So I think I've got that right. But we had our initial discussion, got some things on, on the table so we could disagree. And now we're gonna work things out. So that, that will continue to be a work, a work in progress. The Chamber of Commerce did not meet this month due to their very busy activity with the Riverwalk Festival, which was a wonderful success, I thought. Great numbers of people downtown and fun just to see all of the great activity and all of the participation of our various groups. And special thanks also to the police department and the DPW and all of our various groups that come to make that event the best darned summer weekend that this town ever had. So very happy for that. However, second to that will be this Saturday, July twenty-fifth, at the Lowell Showboat Stage. The Swiss Horn group is going to be doing a concert for, I can't imagine, two hours of Swiss horn music. But anyway, there you have it. And in a week moment, I said yes, catch up right into emceeing this event. And so I'll be there Saturday, Friday for the dress rehearsal, Saturday for the event. And if you hear some weird noises in town, that would be your answer. So Lowell Memorial Fund did not meet in, in all that, so for the foreseeable future. So that pretty much sums up everything I've got.
Just as a solid, that's celebrating the Swiss heritage in this area, sir.
Thank you for making that clear. Yes, it is.
I want, I want the people to know that there is a reason.
We're gonna have this.
Swiss heritage.
Swiss heritage.
I, I know some of the names, so it's okay.
All right. Mr. Howe, manage your support, please.
I have no idea how I can follow that. The birdhouse at Three Eighteen in the Ken has been removed. That property has been cleaned up. And special thanks should be given to Impact Church. They work with City Lowell to spread the topsoil and plant grass seed. I think that seed is planted or in the process, we're, we're getting there. But we got the topsoil all spread out. But even more than that, as, as Councilmember Althaus mentioned, Impact Church worked very closely with City Lowell. They also worked with the, with the fair and with the schools. But they were very, very involved with a couple of vacant lots. Creekside, Stone Lakeside, Richards Park. They had four hundred and forty-six volunteers doing one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight hours of work during a week-long celebration that they call Love Week during July, from July thirteen through July seventeen. We are, this community is just so blessed to have so many caring individuals and, and caring churches who do so much to make this such a great community. And so really thanks, thank you to Impact Church and what they did during this last week. Direct plans have been completed for the South Monroe parking project. We're looking at some of the details of those now. And we're hoping to have that ready and maybe even up to bid soon. And then the same in terms of the Avery Monroe, Washington Jefferson Jackson Street project. Couple of things that I wanted to notice, we're reviewing that, are that we're looking at two water projects that would go along with that, water line replacements. Since we're milling the road, we might as well look at the water at the same time. One of them would be Jackson Street, and the other would be right out here on Monroe Street. We're also looking at a manhole that's at the corner of Avery and Jefferson. There's some issues with that manhole and maybe doing some, some work there and trying to get that cleaned up and taken care of. Also, Jeff Ben Sutters had come to us and said, you know, we really need to televise and where needed, clean the sewer lines on all the, what we call the presidential streets. And so you've probably seen the back truck driving around the last week and a half. And maybe another truck running around doing some of the televising. So that's occurring so that we have a better handle on what's going on with the sewer lines. And if there's some sewer lines that we need to really take a look at, or manholes that we really need to take a look at. That's all in preparation for the street discussion that we had earlier, trying to gear up to be able to make some recommendations to you on, on street repairs. And I will tell you that we're looking very closely at Jefferson and we're looking very closely at Monroe. Washington needs it as well, probably one of the worst streets in town. But the more highly traveled streets are Jefferson, the truck route. And then Monroe actually gets almost three times as much traffic, blue green, as, as Jefferson. So we are doing all of that. And then I guess the other thing on the project that I wanna mention to you is that we are revisiting whether or not we would do a full milling, resurface on a couple of sections of Avery. We may be able to do, we've talked about potentially a crush and shape or maybe just some, some spot saw cuts and fill back in. So we're kinda reevaluating that and, and what the scope of that part of the project is gonna be. Personally, I would like to see us, depending on how the estimates come in, I'd like to see us start pushing up Jefferson. Because I, I really think I'm heading toward recommending to you that next year's street project will be Jefferson. And that we do all Jefferson. We may have to buy in for it to be able to get it all done. I'm not sure how much, yet, how much sewer work will need to be done there. But I think we're heading in that direction. It's a, it's a truck route, it's in horrible shape. The trucks shake the houses. I get several complaints about that street and just the shaking that goes on because of the potholes, so. That's where we're at on streets so far in that project. Just a reminder, I will be out for most of the next two weeks. We're traveling to Virginia to move our daughter and her family back to Michigan. And I think the only person who's more excited than I am is maybe my wife because we also have our granddaughter in the house. So we're very much looking forward to that. And the last thing that I have for you is that I, I had the pleasure almost twenty years ago to participate in a leadership program through, it was a statewide leadership program to Michigan State University. And there was something that came out of that leadership program that actually came from a township clerk. And it was the same, it was called, "Don't irk the clerk." And as I've worked in local government and talked to other folks in local government, I found that so true that you don't wanna irk the clerk. Because the clerk is involved in so many things that, that happen within the local unit of government. What I found with, with the City of Lowell is that irking the clerk is virtually impossible here. Because we have such a wonderful individual who's served in that capacity for many, many years. And that's Betty Morlock. And tonight is Betty's next meeting, official meeting with us as the city clerk. A few things about Betty is that, and one of the main reasons I think that it's impossible to irk her is that she's caring. She, she is perhaps the most caring person I know. She takes care of her family, she does everything that she can for her family. But she also does everything that she can for the city family. She will constantly ask, you know, can I take care of that? Can I do that for you? Can I, is there anything I can do? And, and, and she's always doing that, just a, just a very, very caring, very sincere individual. She's also incredibly knowledgeable. And Betty's memory on the details of events that have occurred in this city over the last more than two decades is, is just impeccable. There are so many times where I can go to Betty and I can say, you know what, Betty, I'm working on this. And she will rattle off the twenty-year history of the issue or what happened at the house, or what happened at the business, or what happened on the street. Just is, is just incredibly, incredibly knowledgeable in that area. Betty is also, when, when you think of the ideal clerk, you want to have somebody, you need to have somebody who is a dedicated public servant. Clerks perform perhaps the most important duty that we perform here in the city, and that's oversee elections. And it's a, it's a great privilege that we have in this country to, to be able to exercise our right to vote. And having a free and open process, and a process that is free of flaws and is incredibly important to this country. And it really comes down to the local level at, at every juncture of the states and, and local units of government. And it really comes down to those local clerks. And she, she is just incredible at her knowledge of elections and the way things have, have changed over the years and how she's adapted to those changes. And it's just a, it, it just shows you how dedicated she is as a, as a public servant. She will do whatever it takes to serve others. She is tireless in those efforts. I will be forever grateful for having the opportunity to work with you, Betty. But more so, I'll be forever grateful for having the opportunity to meet you and to get to know you and to be your friend. Though I still haven't met Sam. And I'm not sure anybody has, and most people question whether or not Sam actually exists. I had an opportunity to attend a dinner with Betty. It was a Christmas dinner at Rockford Ambulance. And she invited me to come along, and so I did. And a woman walked up to us and, you know, albeit her back, my back was to her. But she said, "Hello, Betty," and she says, "Oh, and you must be Sam. We've received you before." And of course, I wasn't Sam, but I'm looking forward to meeting him. Hopefully, your retirement reception.
I hope.
And, and there is a reception, and I didn't write this down, but I think I have it off the top of my head. August sixth, at the Main Street Inn from four to seven, the public is invited. Please come by and wish Betty a happy retirement. And Betty, I wish you a happy retirement. And thank you very much for everything that you've done.
And you're that close to irking the clerk?
I'm in trouble too. No, I'll be in the room.
No, thank you. Well, I'll have great words to share on August sixth. With that? Oh, we are just officially, our appointments at follow-up awards officially through fall. Thank you for those, sir.
A move that we adjourn at seven forty-seven.
I'll second.
A move to second to adjourn at seven forty-seven, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.